Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Skylar Community Schools in its partnership with the parents, students, and the community is committed to educate students to become skilled, knowledgeable, and responsible citizens in a global society. Notice of this meeting was given in advance according to state law by giving notice of the meeting to the public. Notice of the meeting was also given in advance to all members of the Board of Education. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting has been preceded by advanced notice and is hereby declared to be an open session. A copy of the opening meeting act is included in the agenda and posted in the front of the meeting room. I will entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
Make the motion for the consent agenda.
For a second. Any items to call out in specifics? Didn't see any irregularities there either. Sally? Go ahead and call the roll. Yes.
Lenusa?
Yes.
Misha?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Blavatik?
Yes. All right. Public forum, recognition of guests. We have guests with us tonight, specifically newly elected board members. It'll take place in January, so welcome. With regard to any comments from the public, we will entertain conversations for up to five minutes, but we will limit it to that. There will be no actions taken on any comments. If none, we will move on. Student rep report? Yes, be careful with Chuck.
Fall break was two weeks ago. It was pretty good. We could always give some more time off. Which is four started conditioning today. I know girls basketball and I think boys basketball started today. They started in the new gym, we started using it. So some students are really excited about that. They're really excited too about the like the stream we have. They're putting like a starters hype video to get like the students hyped up. For band, we started. For band, we got a superior at our last football game, which was pretty good. Now we're getting ready for our winter concerts and Christmas music and stuff. One act is competing in two weeks. Well, next week, November 21st at Hender, I believe. We, for the most part, have our lines memorized and the time to beat is 30 minutes. And if it goes over 30 minutes, we get disqualified. My fastest time right now is 29 minutes and 20 seconds, I believe. Jeans Day money was collected on behalf of the student council and the money was donated to Terry's there. Thanksgiving break is coming up, November 25th, 26th, and 27th. So students are really excited about that too. Also, speech has been working to memorize their speeches and are excited for having a speech. Kids are really excited. I know they're getting tired of wearing masks and social distancing, but eventually they're getting used to it.
Any questions for her?
Well, I know you said one act is practicing their timing. What's the name of the?
Elephant's graveyard. It's based on a true story. I think. I don't remember what city it was in, but it was in the 1940s that it was a circus and the elephant, they were like in a parade and then the elephant rider, wait, no, the elephant got like mad at the elephant rider because she wanted to go eat something like a melon, I believe. And she started walking towards a melon, but the elephant rider got mad and started hitting her on the head. And she basically got mad and threw him off her back and squishes her foot. And so the people that town wanted justice, so they were going to hang him, hang her, I'm sorry, hang her. And first, before they hung her, they tied her foot to a train track so she wouldn't run off. And when they like started like hanging her, they forgot they tied her up, so they were like ripping her apart. So, yes.
So I take it it's not a comedy?
No.
It'll be quite graphic then, I'm guessing.
Yeah.
All right.
Are there questions?
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to policy. I'll move to approve the first reading. Okay, that's, that's a type for there. That's why, that's why I was confused as well. Okay, I move to approve the second reading of new and amended N S B policy updates as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, discussion.
It's just we get policies throughout the school year, but this year it's a different year. And federal policies that come down to us that we have to try to adapt. And you have to have them if you're going to accept federal funds. That's basically what's going on here. So there's a bunch of new federal policies in there that are already added to our book because we accepted grants. And so it's pretty much a formality for you. It is a second reading, but we, we just got them. So our first reading was in October and then tonight your second reading.
Yep.
These will be live on your website as you update a policy.
Any comments with regard to any of the issues of student staff and conduct?
I guess for the audience, just know that the policy is out there, but the red line policy basically tells you if there's a red line policy attached. It just says what's different from the old policy. So if you don't read the whole policy, you can read the difference easier. So it's a quicker read.
Some of these things, they may continue to, to update things throughout the year yet. I mean, this is, this is a live document where they're making adjustments as on the fly, like you said. And so we have to be open to that as well. Any other comments, questions? Go ahead, call the roll, Sally.
Lenusa?
Yes.
Misha?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Blavatik?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes. Early retirement incentive program. You want to take that, Chuck?
Do I want to take that? Of course. I won't make the motion to extend it or not extend it. I would like to table this matter because we are still in negotiations and some of the negotiations may depend upon this, or this will depend on the negotiations that are in play right now. So at this point, I think we should table this until the negotiations are finished.
Move, go ahead.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, additional discussion. Again, just, you know, there are some things that have been presented by the negotiating team. And in order to, to bargain in good faith, we can't say the yes or no. We won't do this particular scenario. It all plays into the overall value of what we're trying to negotiate. So for that reason, that's, I would agree that we should table the motion.
Well, what this basically amounts to is there's some items that are asked for by the teachers. And yeah, that is something that's put into play in the new negotiated contracts. There may not be funding for this, so that's probably partially why we're going to table this at the moment and see where we go in the negotiations. If that clears anything up.
Any other comments? We still need to vote on tabling, right? Yep, so go ahead and call the roll.
Misha?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Blavatik?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Lenusa? Yes.
Okay, district audit.
I move to accept the 2019, 2020 district audit, audit and annual financial reports as filed.
Okay, discussion on that?
Okay, at your tables, it is just a summary of this booklet. And I put the entire audit up there, but it would take us an hour to go through the audit tonight. But the summary is here, you've had a chance to look through it online as far as the details. And I'm just going to get some highlights. So three parts to the audit. One of them is management discussion and analysis, which comes from my office. The other part is basic financial statements and modified cash basis. What it means is this is that it's not all cash basis. There is some modified cash basis because they take some accrual money that we would have accrued and put it into our ending balances. Okay, so it actually inflates our ending balance. It's a fair assumption to use accrued money if you can use accrued expenses for that same month. It just so happens that September is one of our biggest tax draw months. And so what we accrue in August, they count into last year. Did it be like the paycheck, the hours you worked in December? You get paid in January, but it goes into your previous year's tax statement that you made it in that current year because that's when you accrued it. So it's not that hard to understand, but it is an accrual basis line that will artificially increase your ending balance. And they do it every year, but it's the only accrual basis line in the whole audit. The second thing is the financial statement. And there's several ways to represent the data in there. The first way is by each one of our 10, 10 funds that we have. We have a, we have a general fund, we've got an depreciation fund, a building fund. We have 10 funds, food, activity, bond, qualified capital purpose. So there's some parts where they put them together and there's some parts where they leave them apart. Okay, and so you're going to see it represented several ways. The final way that they represent is that they put a cash value on, on your assets. And so they also added our assets. So just real quick on the first page. It just explains what they do in their audit and how these different groups are represented. On page two of this little report, financial highlights, it tells you what's made up in our district, 298.8 square miles. There's six attendance centers and so we basically summarize that part of it. The board has a levy of about a dollar two in the general fund, 7.2 cents in the bond, and 3.6 cents in the qualified capital purpose undertaking fund. Have a summary of what the expenditures were for this 1920 year. And the receipts that we had, so a total asset. The next one is a financial analysis of the district as a whole. And we receive the majority of our money from property tax. The second most that we receive is in state funding. It's a combination of special ed and state aid. However, also included in there are those things that, like when people apply for homestead exemption, rather than pay the tax at the local level, the state pays their tax and so it comes into the state level. And so there's some additional funding from the state that goes in there. You'll see that last year, our valuation due to the flood, it dropped. It was a million, $396,000 drop in valuation. And this, and what it generated in taxes at that dollar two level. And it reached one of those funds. And then there's a following of all the, all of the rate tables below. So general fund was a dollar one three. We asked for the same amount, it ended up a dollar one four, so four tenths, one cent, one, one tenth of a cent is what we ended up having to adjust. We asked for the same amount and the same thing in the bond and qualified capital purposes. This is the first year that we didn't find, or we didn't put money into the jet to the building fund because of the bond. We put it into the bond. So you'll see, that's the difference there. On the next page, in summary. State aid went up 491,000. That was, that took care of our budget increase, so we didn't need to raise our budget or tax asking in that year. And then you'll see all of the local sources. So down below, in the middle of page 40, you're going to see local receipts. And it says what we budgeted or what we anticipated for the local level was 14,673. We received 13,431. And the year before, we received 13,315. State sources, we expected 48 and we received 64. Remember, some of those taxes that were going to come from the local came now in the state. Okay, so it isn't that we, that we over or underestimated. We have to request it out of one category and gets paid out of another. And so the county, we expected 91,000, county fines and licenses, and there's some other things that go into that county level. But we expected 91 and we received 114. Federal sources, we expected a million six and we wrote some additional grants throughout the year. We received a million nine. Also know this, that from year to year, we don't always get our federal money that comes in on time. We may spend it, we may request it, but it gets held up somewhere. So this year we got a billion nine rather than a million six of it. Okay. So total receipts, we expected 21,938 and we got 21,938. So our ending balance in there is 4,698. What, in the next one, you have to explain what, what do you think is the greatest volatility? In the past, it has been, it has been eggplant values has shown the greatest volatility. And the response of state aid, so if the legislators fully fund it or if they don't fund it, those two are the most, are the things that probably have the biggest impact on us. Special ed stayed at about 53 to 56%. Special ed is reimbursed. All the schools across the state spend what they have to in special ed throughout the year. There's not a cap on special ed. You can overspend that budget if you need to. And the reason is that the things that you require in a special education I E P, if I get a high cost student, I have to fund them. Okay, I cannot break the general fund, non-special ed, but I can go over the special ed. So financial analysis. Okay, then the next page is all the funds, the other 10, other nine funds were all broken out. So the depreciation fund, employee benefit fund shows the budgeted in the first column and then it shows our actual. And then in the third column, it shows comparison with the 1819 year. This is spread out through about 50 pages in the budget document or in the audit itself. I thought this would be a faster way for you to be able to just get a picture of your financial position in the district. The last one talks about debt administration. You're always looking at what is my debt to cash ratio? And it explains exactly what happened across the district from clear back in 2007 till now. And it's kind of the why of what your budget is. Okay, the audit tells you a lot of lines, the what of numbers. But this paragraph pretty much tells you why is it the way it is? And then in the end, you gotta be able to hang somebody on this, so the superintendent's office that's responsible for this. The next pages that are also attached, you're going to see, because we receive more than $750,000 from the federal government, you have to have a single audit and you have to have a single audit on every one of those funds. Lunch fund, title funds, all those funds. I think the big thing for you is on this page 46, in our opinion, Skylar Community Schools, 123 complied with all material respects and actual compliance requirements referred to above. That could have a direct effect on, on material effect on each of its major programs. And it says we did not identify any deficiencies in the internal control. You got a clean opinion from the auditor this year. It's a lot of pages to tell you that. Some people really kind of are nervous about the audit report. We like it because it helps us make sure that, that we are compliant, we're doing everything the way that we're supposed to do in this office and that there's no material issues that would surface. The last page identifies one material thing. Remember, I talked to you just a few minutes ago about, about accrual basis accounting and what we accrued in one month versus what cash balance is. There is one issue that's out there, but it's something that we've been doing with them. Their audit requirements change from year to year and they're always tightening audits so that, like in my office, if Sally opens the mail, she can't do another thing with it. She's got to pass it on to somebody else. It's called segregation of duties, so that there's always more than one person. Sally has no check signing. She can write the check, but she can't sign. So everything has to have at least a second, if not a third. When Sally writes a check, there has to be two signatures on it. So there's two more eyes on it. Same thing happens when we go to reconciling books and accounts. There's always a second or a third eye that has to go over it. Every payroll, there's a second eye. Penny makes the payroll, I have to check it. Okay, so you have a second all the time backup. The one compliance issue that they found was at the end of the year, when the auditors come in, they have always done our, our modified cash balances. They call the banks, they call the bonding companies, they do all that, put that together. Well, the federal government has now said that, that if you're going to audit a thing, you cannot be responsible for it. Okay, and so if you look on there, it just talks about district personnel do not obtain the expertise necessary to provide the auditors with a trial balance. The auditors have eyes put that together. Okay, so there's our second set of eyes. Potential effect exists if misappropriation of assets or material misstatement of financial statements could occur and not be prevented or detected by the district's internal control. That's why we want the auditor to do it. We want that other set of eyes out there. And in their recommendation, they say, we recommend the district review and approve the proposed auditor adjusting entries and adequacy of the financial statement disclosures prepared by the auditor. And they apply analytic procedures to the draft financial statements among other procedures as considered necessary by management. The whole thing that I gave you was management discussion. I put all those numbers together. Okay? And then they have to confirm them. Now, when they do the modified cash balance, they come into it and then I have to confirm it. And not only me, I give it to Penny and Penny also has to confirm that with her books. So the district's response, the district relies on the auditor to propose the adjustments necessary to prepare the financial statements, including the related disclosures. However, the district reviews and approves, so we don't have to do anything different in the future. But it does have to be listed in the audit this way. Okay? Such financial statements and adjustments, the superintendent, business manager, and board members will meet with the auditors to review and complete the audited financial reports. A week ago, last, or last Thursday, the board members Chuck and Rich came in and they sat down with the auditors. Brian, were you there?
No.
Just those two. But the board always sits in with the auditor, the people in the finance committee to make sure that they go through and ask all the questions at that time. So I guess I'll turn it over to you to any other comments. The whole thing is out there, it's open for public. We're one of the few districts that puts our audit out there for everybody to see. I just think it's more transparency and I've always done that. I think it's, we have, we have a great business manager, good office support. I shouldn't say great because she's here, but she does an awesome job in a fund that could have the greatest potential for fraud because it deals with cash. Anytime when you deal with cash, cash, you have the potential of, of things not balancing or not working. So this year, because of our move here, the buildings have had to deal with the cash. And so we don't necessarily get a lot of cash that comes into our building. We mostly deal with the reports, so deposit slips and those kinds of things. But we don't deal with cash. As superintendent, I never touch cash in this district. I'm one of the people who, no matter what, I could help with something, but I cannot ever touch cash in concessions or gay or anything like that.
Chuck, any comments?
Well, all I can say is that I believe the audit cost us a lot of money. But when you have a budget of this size and not to have any, any discrepancy is, as far as I'm concerned, very amazing. So I think our people are doing a great job. And I'm sure that the auditors are doing a great job also, so I just say keep up the good work as far as I'm concerned.
With regard to the comments of no issues this year, and I think, you know, maybe the last three years, maybe we had one each of those years, very minor details over the last several years. And I think you talked a little bit about internal controls. Again, having the central office here, I think, helps with dissemination of some of the duties. That's probably a good thing from the auditor's perspective. And another comment that they, they threw out, you know, with, we did refinancing recently of the bonds. Again, just fiscally responsible activities that we've done actually saved another million plus dollars. Yeah, so I mean, those types of things, you know, we are doing the right things with regard to managing the funds that we have in our, in our hands, I guess. So that's, that's where we want to be. So if anybody has any other questions or comments, now's the time. If not, Sally?
Hernandez?
Yes.
Blavatik?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Lenusa?
Yes.
Misha?
Yes.
All right, resignations.
Make the motion to accept staff resignation.
For a second?
I will second that.
Any comments or discussion on that?
No, it's I was a recent graduate from high school, was working in the dual language program and now has a different job with her family and so
Yeah.
That's what the position is. We're short some pairs, getting people to buy the jobs right now. And so just losing pairs, especially some of those hard to find programs where you need a dual language speaker. I'm sorry, but it's difficult to recruit and to be able to hire at this point. I'm sure other businesses are seeing the same kinds of things, but so I think we're probably short two or three pairs across the district right now.
Sally, go ahead, call the roll.
Blavatik?
Yes.
Yes.
Lenusa?
Yes.
Misha?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
All right, this school priority report.
I see Dr. Leftall and Jim and Stephen Grammer that they're on.
Yep.
Yep.
Dr. Leftall, do you want to start this?
Sure.
Sure.
Just kind of a couple of, we, uh, have been spending quite a bit of time. We had the KOK on premises with us, uh, this month, and did some walkthroughs, tried a different evaluation, um, kind of a checkpoint thing, where we could check for certain things in classrooms. Um, had some great conversations, um, discussed different areas that maybe we can focus on over the next few months. Yeah, it's been, it's been just really good. I like the part that we're trying to break down our priority plan for you guys, so that we can give just a little bit more feedback. So as we're writing this, um, you can kind of see different sections that we're working on. So like EL learners, mission-driven, um, schools, utilizing thought exchange. Those pieces are really important for us. Um, you know, some of our big stuff is, you know, attendance, still working on those types of things, and chronic absenteeism, of course. Um, EL was a big focus, um, for when the, and the state came up for us as well. And, um, EL protocols was an important part, making sure our standards were being addressed in our core curriculum, um, which is good. And so we're just kind of working away. And, uh, again, if you guys have any questions for me, um, if you, we attached the draft plan on there for you guys as well. Uh, we will go through a rating scale here in the next couple of weeks to, uh, just kind of rate each one of the pieces that we're focusing on, and hopefully heading in the right direction. So I'll let Jim speak a little bit, and Stephen.
I don't really have much to add to that. Dr. Vargas was, uh, here, and, um, you know, we had a meeting and, and mostly listened to, uh, some of the, the reflections and the things that they saw. I don't know if Dr. Hazing wants to talk a little more about that or not, but, um, it was pretty brief. And, um, you know, we just continue to, uh, to work and, and get the, the progress made that we can. Um, I don't, Mr. Grammar, if you have anything else?
Something else to talk about, but just like to commend you and Joey on a great job you do compiling all our information and putting it into readable form.
Thanks, buddy.
Yeah, thank you.
Do any of the board members have any questions for us, or Dr. Hazing?
Did you have some other comments for?
I don't have much. Do, does, do, do a great job. I think one of the things is, the chronic absenteeism with all the COVID that we have is kind of a confusing thing for right now, because some of our students who aren't here or who have missed twenty days, or even ten days in the first semester, would be on a chronic absenteeism report. But it isn't that they, that they didn't want to be here. It's that some of them were excluded. And so my concern was, how are you gonna count chronic absenteeism in a time of a pandemic? Because I do think that we're gonna need to dis-irrigate our data to show those kids who weren't allowed to come or who were caught in a, in an exclusion. And because otherwise, we're gonna have a big increase in chronic absenteeism. And we've done a great job of chipping away at that and getting kids to school. And I hate to see for us to, to have data that would reflect the opposite. I think the other things are, this is our third year of this plan. And our teachers have busted their tails. They've worked hard to, to try to make sure that they engage kids in classrooms. Our principals have worked hard to try to support it. And there are some things, uh, I think, with, especially with teachers not being here when they're out of the classroom, because they're also out for one of the reasons that, that our kids are sometimes put in a more difficult classroom setting of not having that main instructor there. So if I have a teacher who's out for ten days or out for fourteen days, and then come back, and then they're excluded again. Um, our teachers have done a lot to try to zoom in and try to work. But there are some things in this year. We will not have had a state test in two years, right, Dave? Or Dr. Gibbons? So the data that we would use in our priority plan was heavily reliant on our ability to be able to perform those tests while the state didn't test last spring. And this spring, they're not gonna, they're not gonna count the tests.
Right, we're still gonna test, but it's not going to be, there's not a.
Whereas of now, they're still gonna test. So those are the things that kind of are concerning to me as to how are they gonna really evaluate and give our teachers a really fair shot at the job that they're doing? Because I'm, I'm not sure that the way that this is all lining up, that it, that you can compare one year to the next. When, when you have kids who are out, you gotta, the teacher's gotta catch them up, and you have kid, some teachers who are out and somebody else teaching it. I would have some real concerns about, about how this priority plan could work. I'm sure the principals probably have a lot better, a lot better level of confidence or understanding in this, but I also want to share that I don't think the state knows how they're gonna do it. That's what their message also was. Dave was at the same meeting. And Dave, if you wanna comment more than me?
Well, I, I do know that they talked, I, I believe it was Dr. Leftall talked about the, uh, the, the form that we will be filling out. So I think that that's going to be highly important. But yes, I would agree. I've had that question with them twice about, um, because they're changing the way the three-through-eight grade testing is working, we're not going to have school accountability this year. Um, so there's not gonna be a new A-Quest classification for anybody. And it, and that includes high school. Well, you know, if we do well on the ACT test this year, which we might, you know, there's, there's good data indicate that we're in good shape. What, you know, what else are they going to use to determine if we're staying on this plan or not staying on this plan? So we're, I mean, we're just gonna have to show them that some of the things that we have been doing as a part of this plan are now systemic. In other words, it's built into our day. It's just normal, natural work for us now, not something that we have to force in this year.
So did they give any indication? I, I wasn't able to make the, the meeting. I'll tell everybody that I was, I was invited, I just wasn't able to attend. But did they give any indication of the percentage of increase from whatever testing information they do have, as far as an improvement level?
No, I mean, since we did not ACT test last year, we did, and we did have all of the students that would have tested last year, tested in the spring. They, so they were seniors this year, there were, I think, about ten students that did not test. So that would change our data a little bit. Uh, but like, for example, I looked at it, and I don't have it sitting here in front of me, so I'm, um, you're putting me on the spot a little bit here.
I like doing that.
I, I, looking up here to be sure about it, when it comes time for my report. But there was like thirty-three percent would have met on the, uh, the language, or, no, excuse me, on the math portion of it. Uh, forty percent would have met on the science portion of it. It's tough to say ELA, because ELA, take, the, the ELA test takes the reading, language, and a writing test, where they did not allow the writing test this, this fall. But we were at forty percent of students on the reading portion, thirty-three percent of students on the language portion. All of those are pretty significant increases on the number of students or the percentage of students that would have met, which is an eighteen on the math, nineteen on the science, and eighteen on the ELA portion. So there was, there would have been significant improvements, but whether that would have been enough for them to say, way to go, I don't know.
And just real quick, I could say, they were not very, um, clear with what, uh, the number might be, or the level that we have to get to might be. Mr. Kasek does a great job kind of asking those tough questions to him, so I'm gonna have him just kind of jump in real quick.
Yeah, thanks. I, I've continued to ask the question, you know, what we're going to do is we're gonna take another self-assessment at the end of the year, like we always do. And you number each area from a one to four. And, you know, my question, even from the onset of this process, has been, what were the numbers that got us on this plan? And what do the numbers need to look like to get us off this plan? Because the, the coach in me tells me, you've got to have a target to shoot for. And, um, I, I asked that question again. Uh, while there was agreement that that's a, a great thing to have, uh, we have yet to see a number, um, that will, uh, give us a little more definition of what we're shooting for. So that's some frustration on my part, but I continue to ask the question. And I know many of them are tired of hearing it, but I'll keep asking it till I get an answer.
And what we're saying, they, that'd be the Department of Ed. That's not, it's not our KOK experts. They, being the determining people, will be, uh, Department of Ed representatives.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, the Department of Ed is gonna make the, and the state forward makes the final determination is who's on and who's off. But I would say that KOK, if they give a very strong recommendation, that would be pretty mean.
Correct.
Thank you.
I think Dr. Left also has some stats on the growth with ELL students, and they were the only school that's being, being challenged on our Alpa scores on this kind of a thing. And the new newcomer program that is over here, there was some huge growth from the beginning of the year in reading until now, for these kids. They're now speaking more English and, and reading higher level. I think I saw for one student, it was from eighty-nine to two-hundred-and-eighty-nine or something like that. And one of them had about a ninety to three-hundred and some. So there's some, they're still on, aren't at the grade level, obviously, because they're not English speakers, yet they're not. And they say it takes six years. So all these are kids who've been here a year or two. So it's, so it's, well, just in our country now. So, you know, those are some things that we've always visited with these people about. You're expecting these kids to be able to score at a regular senior level, and they don't have our language. So that's always been a frustration. But I do think this new program that we have over here, they're doing a heck of a job working with those kids and trying to get their basic skills in math and reading, so.
Yeah, I would just add one.
Go ahead, keep adding.
Okay, so I appreciate Dr. Hazing stating that. We did, we saw, uh, some pretty good growth with, uh, a number of our students. Um, and we, we were looking at more of the grade equivalent, so they were jumping. We had one student who was, uh, at kindergarten grade level, and in just over a month, uh, was, uh, increased two-point-four, uh, grade levels a month. So we saw some really good growth in Brandy's there, I think, still. And she can speak on that as well, but it was just really exciting to see. And, uh, we're really driving to really continue that performance, so we're excited about it.
Well, I know the absenteeism has to be, or, or I don't even wanna call it absentee if we're telling them to stay home. You know, that's really not absentee. I guess my biggest concern is, again, so what, 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 what? And again, you guys can probably comment on it, sort of, what additional things we can do to help them not lose any ground and make sure that they are trying, you know, maintaining. I guess that's.
So one of the things that they said was, it's all about how you code the absentee, how the state sees it once they get put into their system. Well, the coding is fine, but the biggest thing is that these kids, some of them have missed two weeks, four weeks. I know one student who's missed six weeks of school. And it's not the coding that's gonna be so good, but what, how do you keep this kid up? You know, now he's, he's a pretty bright student, but he's had this first semester, and our teachers have reached out and have zoomed and have done everything they can for these kids to try to keep them up. But it's still not the same as sitting in that classroom. And so I could code them, according to the state, I could code them as that. But it, but there's other factors. So that's, that's our concern is, you know, what are you gonna haul our kids to? What are you gonna haul our teachers to? Just if our kids don't necessarily score well, because a kid's been out fifteen weeks this year, you're gonna tell me I got a bad teacher? These are did their best. So that's where this priority plan just doesn't seem to have any, I don't know, of any other program that you could get away with, just moving the dial wherever you want it.
I have no doubt that the, the, the staff is doing everything they can do in the class. I have no doubt about that. It's just, like I said, it's frustrating just to kind of not know where you stand. I guess that's probably the best way to say it.
Well, it's not our grades, it's just, this is what it is right now. And we're, we're trying to, these guys are really working hard, trying to make sure that they're supporting their teachers, doing the right things, making the right decisions, so. Anyway, it's just a report, so.
It is, but I appreciate the comments of all the, all the administration. So never be shy, always be willing to share extra stuff.
You got it.
All right. Move on to, uh, principal reports. So we got a lot of people gone for ad activity, so.
One of the things that the principals do, all the administrators do, is that they highlight at least a staff and a program each month. And so there's ten of them, and so there's twenty staff or programs at least that get highlighted every month. And so when you look through these reports, excuse me, they call it a staff or a program spotlight. Sometimes they're the same thing, but trying to make sure that these people get a spotlight to the Board of Education, to the community for their work. Normally, at this point in the meeting, we would say, is there one good thing? You know, what are you looking at? And so trying to get that out of people to say, what is it that is good that you're seeing? And I'll, um, you can look through all the principal reports, but I'm sure you can all read it, at least, but, start in the back corner with Dave. Give me one good thing, give the board one good thing that you highlight.
Uh, you know, I'm gonna stick with what's in my report, that PD that we have, you know, where you really appreciate being able to take that time and, and do that work, and, um, I, I've not heard a whole lot of bad things about it. I mean, we put a, uh, what do you, a thought exchange about it last week. Yeah, there were a lot of appreciative remarks in there, so. And so it, it really worked well for us, I think.
Who wants to pick up on that?
Well, as a teacher, I'll second what he said. Um, it was just really nice to have that time to just kind of get back on track with everything that we needed to do. I guess just kind of regroup with your team, and, um, that was, that was really nice. And I'll also throw a good thing, uh, my son's in kindergarten, he's in the dual-language program, and he did not know any Spanish when he walked into that classroom the first week. Um, but he counted to one hundred for us in Spanish the other day, so that was pretty exciting to see.
I'm sure for the two new board members to put you on the spot, one good thing? Okay.
In the world of healthcare, there actually is hope on the horizon that there will be a vaccine by the end of the year. Ninety percent efficacy through Pfizer, and the first people to get it, one A's will be obviously healthcare people, first responders. One B will be people living in group home settings, nursing home types things. And then two is school.
Oh, awesome.
And faculty.
Very good.
Wow.
I thought you'd say getting on a board was a highlight. Good. What you got?
Nina?
Nina? Well, I wanted to share that I feel really proud that, um, recently, just the group from, the football team from, uh, West Point came to play to the high school a couple of weeks ago. And a cook worker who lives in West Point and came with, uh, her sons, who play in the team, told me how respectful and kind the kids from Skyler were. Like, even though when, you know, the West Point team went, won, um, they were really polite and say, have a safe drive home. And also, it was a really cold night, and she approached the concession stand and asked for a. And she approached that concession stand and asked for a hot beverage and they say, no, we don't sell any, but we have free warm hogs for, for free. And she was just telling me going over and over about how kind and respectful all the people was in town. So that makes me really, really proud of our students.
Well, I've seen on one of the reports, you talked about we went from a yellow to an orange face. I think that speaks highly of, of the word that everybody in the school systems put in together to make sure that we keep our kids in school. I've heard of a lot of surrounding communities where that's not the case. So to know that we have those systems in place in our school system for our kids to enjoy that hands-on type experience learning is just amazing.
Sally?
Mine was that we, I could answer every question the auditor had for me. And produce every piece of paper he wanted to see. And no other questions, so that was cool. Done with the audit for another year. Pack it up and put it away.
Going on what Nina said, I'll pass on what a, I think it was a York parent after Skyler, the varsity volleyball played York the second time here in a, in a week or two. And even though our girls were, were defeated, you know, handily, the second time, the parent just expressed how, and this was, I think, through an email to our coach, and then she passed it on, just how the good attitude that our girls had and, and how hard they played, you know, to the end. And, and the season, even though, you know, wins and losses maybe wasn't the way we'd wanted to go. There was a lot of, a lot of effort and a lot of throwing bodies all around on the court till the, till the very end. So that's my positive.
Well, like I said, this is definitely, you know, continues to be a struggle of a year. It takes perseverance to get through. I guess success wise, you know, and positive thing, I, I think we met with the negotiations team a couple of times. I, I think everybody's open and, you know, for conversation and, and trying to get the best, best for everybody. I know that doesn't always seem to be possible, but we're gonna do everything we can to keep everybody pleased and coming back for another positive educational experience for our kids, because that's really what it's about, making sure that we can educate the kids in a highly highway, so. Mr. Charles?
Well, getting through the audit is always a big plus when you get through the way we got through or have been getting through in the last few years. So that's one plus for me. And another plus is the facilities are getting closer and closer and closer.
I'll give a couple. My first one is anytime you go through an audit, you have to rely on the paperwork that happens on a day-to-day basis, everything from purchase orders to ordering and payroll and accounts receivable and payable. And you have a great office here that knows what they're doing. They work hard. And we were able to talk Sally to stay in for another year, which really helps.
No, another year, right? You said another year?
One year at a time, which is fine.
This year.
Penny does a great job. And this year was a weird year with payroll and having to track. Because in the spring, as you know, we didn't work every day with all of our support staff. But they all had to get their hours and she managed a lot of stuff behind the scenes on payroll that, and we never had one hiccup when it came to either reimbursement or getting the right payroll in. And when the audit comes in and they pull so many paychecks at each level. They, so if they're gonna pull one, then they're gonna compare. And that's what they do is they do, it's called testing. So they, then they pull you and they're gonna pull your whole year's salary and make sure that we paid according to contracts, that retirement was good. And so they're gonna pull people out of every line, so from administrators, they probably pull forty to fifty people a year to test. And then they go through the whole audit fraud thing with Sally and, you know, making sure that her books are all balanced and good. So those people are good. The other group I'm gonna highlight are the school nurses. At the start of the year, when we put together our pandemic plan or return to learn plan, we knew that the principals would have their plates full with just trying to operate and run their buildings. School nurses stepped up and took all of the responsibility for working with East, with East Central. They do all of the checks, who stays, who goes, how do they, so that there's no interference from us as administration as far as what teachers are here, what's that, what students are here. I think there's a high level of competence, but it put a lot of pressure on our nurses to have to do that additional job. They work with the hospitals, they work with East Central, they are great resources for our families. So I'm gonna highlight those people who took on that extra job. In here is a pandemic report and I gave Rich one, I gave some people in the audience some. I'm gonna share with whoever didn't get them. This was as of four o'clock today.
Sally, do you want one?
Dr. Hazing, while you're handing those out, can I do my highlight?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no.
Sorry about that.
Well, sorry, and it normally wouldn't matter, but I really wanted to spotlight, my spotlight this week was Aaron Tuman. He actually won the Shape in Nebraska Physical Education Teacher of the Year Award, which is a really just quite an honor. And he really has done so much for our district and, you know, works out with the rural schools. He also works with Alt Ed. And I know I saw Mr. Grandma also highlighted him as well, but really just with his positive attitude and his leadership skills does a lot. And I wanted to make sure that I was able to just mention that he had won this award. And it's, I think, just a, a bright star on our district in a time of that. We don't have a ton of bright stars, so.
So anybody else out there?
Sure. Yeah, I was gonna kinda hit Aaron Tuman as well. He's my Alt Ed guy. And he won the, that, the Shape Nebraska Physical Education Teacher of the Year, and I just couldn't be more proud of him. So I highlighted my newcomers program and Brandy for doing all the work they're doing. Dr. Hazing, I agree with the nurses as well, they're really working hard. The one other one that I wanted to just highlight was Mark Brady from ESU seven. That guy has bent over backwards to help our district and I just appreciate that guy so much. So just wanted to, and we had some good EL training today, EL for admin that he led, and it was just exceptional. So I appreciate that being able to work with him. That's it.
I'd like to commend my staff. They've done a great job in subbing, covering classes, being flexible, changing direction. And Mr. Cossick does a great job in funneling that, but they could burn out easy and so far they've been hanging in there, doing what they need to to help us get through this time.
I was, I, I was just gonna talk about our staff. They're doing such a great job right now with everything going on. I know, you know, the nurses have been brought up, but just the teachers in general and, you know, the certified classified staff, they're just, they're really doing a great job and they're kinda just taking this as it goes. And I couldn't thank them enough for everything they're doing.
I too think that our teachers have tried to keep whatever normal is right now, a normal routine. And the teaching as normal and steady as a go for our kids, special ed kids need that especially. And my heart goes out all the time to the other administrators trying to get everything covered. And the teachers for all their hard work, so bravo.
Okay. I just passed out the report. I sent that out to the administrators tonight. It's something that Carol and Penny confirmed at four o'clock today. Of our students, nineteen hundred and twelve students, we have sixteen positive at this time. And you'll see that on the chart, it says the building that they're coming from. And so it's less than one percent of our students have tested positive at this point. Like you said, it's really pretty amazing with as much spread as we have, school seems to be a place where we're trying to manage that as best we can, so. And then we have hundred and twenty-four that are currently out on protocol. I don't have the return date for those kids yet, but that's, that's just under seven percent. The, the middle column are for parent educators, because these are people that are working directly in classrooms with kids. And so right now we have sixty-seven, sixty-four point seven pairs. And we have five who have tested positive from the different buildings, one that's out on protocol. And so you'll see that we're, that's a pretty small percentage of our staff right there, but still five, six people that are out in the support staff. Teachers, this morning the number was much higher, but we did have some duplicates in there. Some people were teaching in more than one building. Right now, the elementary building in town has eight teachers that have tested positive. And if you see on the bottom three of them, they'll, will be returning tomorrow. And so we're down to five there. We have five teachers out for testing at the elementary, so we're waiting those results. We're hoping to cut these numbers. We'll have one more return on Wednesday and two more return on Monday. So hopefully we can try to get this thing under control as far as trying to staff and work in our buildings. The next one is middle school, well, excuse me. Heather Bevout wants to claim that she's the queen of this because she has no teachers out, no teachers on protocol right now.
Um, he promised me a prize, just so you guys all know.
SMS has thirty-three and three quarters teachers. They have two positives. And one out on protocol and you'll see one's gonna come back on the eighteenth. One just tested positive. I don't have a return date yet. Penny gets that. And then one teacher testing, awaiting results. High school has two positives at this point. Really, we have one that is a part-time at the middle school, part-time high school. There's two periods at the high school, they counted her as middle. So there's two periods at the high school that this teacher would teach. Otherwise, they have two teachers out, one will return on Friday the thirteenth. And one just tested positive and the other one tested negative, but is still out on exposure and symptoms, so can't return. And then in the district, we have one teacher and that one teacher just tested positive, will be back on the eighteenth. So kind of wanted to give you this because our concern this morning was what do we do? We, their, the principals are feeling the pinch right now with staffing and how do we assign this? And we really needed to get a handle on how many, instead of getting this report once a week, the nurses will update it every morning for us, so we know exactly how they're writing in the district. And I know it's a hard thing, especially at a time when you don't have a lot of subs. I'm sorry, you probably don't understand me, but when you don't have a lot of subs, it makes it extremely difficult to try to cover it because we lost our retirees for the most part who would come back and sub. And so those people, we lost that bank. We keep trying to find, we do have some people on staff who are parent educators who also have local sub certificate. I just signed the form today that would give our local sub certificates an unlimited number of days to sub. And the state put it out for the first time because they know that everybody in the state is short. And so I just filed that with the Department of Ed today, so I've got the approval. So they don't even know it yet, so I will, I will let them know tomorrow that they're no longer limited by their number of days on their certificate. I guess I would, at this point, what we're looking at is should our numbers escalate? And because we're in orange, it means that we meet twice a week now instead of once a week as an administrative team on this with nurses. And we're gonna look at what happens if we get to a point where we have to do some kind of a modified instructional program, where it could be some remote, some in school, rather than all or none, trying to see what we can put together to make sure that going out like we had to last spring when the governor made us go out or closed all schools. That was extremely difficult on our families, our kids, our staff, because they had to try to provide something. And so I think staying on top of this and having this, would you guys be interested if I, if I push the report out to you every day? Do you want it once a week? What do you want? You guys tell me, because I'm willing to share it. Every day might be overload for you, but.
Amongst the other three thousand emails.
But if I put it out every Friday?
That'd be sufficient.
Definitely, yeah, definitely once a week to give us an update of where we're at. I, I guess, you know, this is all good numbers and information. I guess I would have a question with regard to, I mean, so of the, of the things that are coming back positives or potentially where, where things are contracted, do we have any specific areas within the school that we're looking at as, as processes that we need to evaluate on what we're doing?
Since we moved to orange, then we tightened up some processes, so now it's, it's temperatures twice a day. I had the teachers, had the principals talk to their staff about making sure that all their surfaces were cleaned up. We hired custodial staff this weekend to come in and disinfect, but they can't disinfect, well, there's stuff piled up. So we asked our teachers to please, into rooms, because they weren't gonna come in and clean the teacher's room, but they would, they would come in and disinfect. So they disinfect floors, they disinfect chairs, they disinfect tables, okay, hard surfaces. So that's one thing, increased disinfection, okay? We already moved to a tighter masking at lunch. The nurses didn't think that eating in classrooms was a better solution, which is what we had originally put in, because that's what the state put in, eating in classrooms. But they, the nurses said, we think we're safer doing what we're doing. The tables are at least six feet, if not ten feet apart. And we have our limited groups there. Our kids take their mask down while they eat. However, they put their mask back up before the fifteen minutes, and so they don't have to exclude the whole table. That's what was happening to us with a lot of these, was that masks were down longer than fifteen minutes while they ate. Now, they can alternate masks, but they're trying to do their best to try to not have to exclude lunch tables. That's got us in trouble. I'm not sure the numbers on here are reflected of lunch tables anymore, but most of the first quarter we saw were mostly lunch table issues, okay? I don't want kids to have to wolf their lunch down in a, in a couple of minutes either. That's not what we're after, but just to try to limit how much exposure we have, even if some kids pull it up and, because what happens when we get a positive? Then our principals are required to go watch the video over that lunch and count the minutes that kids had their mask on. And then they have to report it to East Central, and then East Central tells them, go.
Do they all sit at, always sit at the same table? Do they rotate people to go one table at a time and?
No rotating. Or they get to pick their first table, I think, at the high school. The principals would know better. But no, I think in the elementary, they're all assigned to whatever tables. The poor kid who got out for six weeks, he got the softball team, he went first, so he went with the softball. And the volleyball team went second. He's gone. So it's like, poor kid, every time we turn around, he's getting excluded because of the lunch table, but nothing you can do.
And yes, at the elementary, they're all assigned, and so they're all assigned with their class too, so they all stay within each other.
Well, anyway, these are the numbers. This is where, where it's at. We're gonna look at, is there an alternative between in school and out of school? Is there another partial solution? I see the three-two method. But I think we're gonna have to really see what works in Skyler, because it might work in some other districts. Omaha could do it easily because they spent six million dollars or five point some million dollars putting a, putting a laptop with internet access in it in their kids. But we don't have six, we don't have that kind of. But we don't have six, we don't have that kind of money to think we're gonna do that. The one thing that was a question for us was, are you SIPA compliant? And if you're not SIPA compliant, we, we are a ninety percent E-rate school. Picks up ninety percent of our tech costs to internet and land and but if, if we provided in the homes, then we're no longer SIPA compliant.
What's the term use? What compliant?
SIPA compliant, which says, do you have all the filters necessary to be able to qualify for E-rate? Well, if we don't provide the internet at home and we don't provide that filter. Okay, here in school, if you go down a wrong road on a computer, we have three different sets of eyes that are looking at you. At home, we don't, and that's where the issue comes. So you're gonna go hundreds of thousands of dollars a year if we lose our E-rate. So okay, I just didn't waste too much time on this for you, but I, I would answer any other questions, but it's an important thing that we, our staff has worked hard to try to limit spread in school. And like you said, you know, we're going through a little bit of a hotspot. Most of them happened outside of school or they came back after Halloween. That's where some of those came. Um, we have very little spread in school. And I'm not saying we don't have any, because you know, how do you know? But I do know that we have very little spread in school as far as our staff, the staff that we have. Hard to know what the spread rate is among some of those. And however, we've told them now, or right now, no eating in staff groups, stay, you know.
So, so it does go into the orange stage. Does that, so does that affect sport activities? Because you have a lot of your indoor seasons coming up, wrestling, basketball.
The NSA is putting out or put out an, uh, an activity, um, an event you requirement. They're, they're considering tightening it up even more now, but I'm not. Um, the last one we got from NSA said fifty percent indoors, hundred percent outdoors. Masking of everybody with the exception of the people who are exerting energy on the floor, those kinds of things. However, there's some scuttle out there right now as to whether or not they're gonna limit it to families only in attendance. We don't control that. The NSA does, but I don't want to put that out to the public because that's not what's out yet. I know that discussion is surfacing because they're seeing spikes and they're nervous about it. And so they're trying to hang on to these athletic seasons the best they can.
There's several communities that are back in the red now.
Yeah, no, I don't think we're very far from it.
Oh, we've, we've been really close the last two or three weeks.
Yeah, I figured.
We're back.
Yeah.
But one of the things that happened early with the, with the health districts is that they said we will let you operate according to your numbers in whatever, okay, you don't all have to go red. But if our numbers get to red, then we will be red and then that, we gotta hold. But we're trying to salvage. If we get toward red, what's our, what's the least big move we gotta make? And so Governor, I got, I'm gonna meet with him tomorrow, does not want us to shut down, does not. He believes schools are the safest place. And we just, we gotta keep doing the right things and God bless our teachers for staying with the protocol. Keep your mask up, do the right things. Social distancing in a classroom is a hard thing for those guys to, for those teachers to try to make sure it always happens and, you know. I think just trying to do the right things.
Dr. Hazing, I got a couple of questions. So
Yeah.
so on this report, just so I'm understanding correctly, so these numbers are uh cumulative to this point or that's, that's who is out on?
Current right now.
Right now, today. As of this moment, uh, okay. And I think unless I'm looking at the uh percentage on the parent educators, uh, unless I'm looking at that wrong, I think that, that positive percentage, that's like almost eight percent, not a quarter of a percent.
I just put the formula in, but I'll go look at it. Five of sixty-four?
Yeah, that should be about eight percent, not the quarter of a percent in the protocol being.
Oh.
Seven point seven percent.
Seven point seven. I got carried over.
Then, then you'd ask or commented, um, you know, if our numbers indicate, you know, red. I mean, do we, I guess, what, uh, what does trigger, what does trigger that? Uh, is it a certain number of positives or, or how do we, how do we make that determination?
Say that again.
Uh, going from orange to red, I guess.
East Central will. It's their risk dial. There's a lot of things that are involved in their risk dial. Okay, but they, they work with our numbers, with our nurses on the numbers. And so um if they're the ones who told us, worked with our school nurses who said, we think you should move from yellow to orange. And they just told us that last Friday, so we just went last Friday and it's as of today, we're in orange. Okay? So if we have a blow up in numbers in our school and they say red, then they're gonna advise us to go out. Or some alternative form.
Do you have any idea what that window of time is that they allow you to make that adjustment or is there? I mean, I know I, I'm sure you've talked about things as an administrative team, but I guess I'm just curious what that looks like from a.
Number one, if it's the high school, we can do it faster probably. If it's the elementary and we got parents that look at daycare because it's affecting their work, it's affecting.
So does it go by school district or by school building?
It can go by building, it can go by district. There are some places where the high schools are remote and the elementaries are going. So our people, thank goodness, our nurses will work with East Central to try to make that recommendation back to us. We're gonna try to run our schools, but the nice thing is that we have an independent group that's really making a recommendation on what we should do as a school. And they're working through our nurses so we can influence it. Jesus. There.
I think I entirely agree that schools are probably one of the safest places to be because we are mandating the mask and stuff. You let everybody out, you go to any store or anything, half the people don't wear masks anymore.
See, that, that's difficult. If I, if I was in healthcare, I'd be just within because I don't understand why we can't just do that, you know? We're putting a lot of pressure on a lot of places unnecessarily. I'm not gonna condemn people who don't wear masks, that's their business, but I don't know, if I see somebody coming at me without a mask, I usually try to go the other way because I ever had it once. And I had it when we were all masked too, so it wasn't like I was careless with it. It was like, oh, no. Anyway, this is where, where we're at. We spent quite a bit of time on this part of it, but um I thought it was necessary to at least inform the board where we are. Also in my report is um construction update, bi-weekly, bi-weekly construction meeting this Thursday at nine. And then the punch list for the auditorium renovation is Tuesday, November twenty-fourth. So building committee, if you wanna put that on your calendar, if you can make them fine, if not. We're looking at this thing probably a month ahead of time, so we're looking at it the first of the year and we can try to get this thing with the punch list going before, before Thanksgiving, that would be awesome. Doesn't mean we're gonna get access, it means that.
That's what I was gonna ask you. What does that mean exactly?
No. The other thing is that we did post for this month, we did post the draft report for twenty twenty and your strategic plan. Please get on and look at it. Your staff has worked hard and your teachers have worked hard, support staff. And it's not finalized yet. It'll be finalized for your December meeting. Because now our staff has a chance to look at it and say, we did this, we think it's important to get credit, right? And so it sits here for this month and will present it to you as the file for twenty twenty. And then our staff will start, be starting to look at what is twenty twenty-one. New board members, you will be invited to a thought exchange. And the thought exchange looks at twenty twenty-one. What are the things that you would like to see? And once you post your thoughts out there, our staff can rate those things, okay? You can rate other people so you can participate early. So the board members, you'll all get invited to participate in that. Our um, the community leaders, in our community leaders meeting will also get a chance to go in. So we get input from the outside. We used to go out to Cargill. That can't happen right now. I'm not sure how we'll get those parents input. But getting inside a Cargill is, it's not gonna happen for us. So we're, we're looking at ways that we can try to get parents to have a voice into your twenty twenty-one strategic plan. But at least board members, you know, and the community leaders, I think we got a pretty good plan coming for that, but.
So the draft that, that is out there for the review.
Yeah.
If we have some comments or thoughts or ideas, that should get sent to, or is there, is that part of the exchange on?
No, no, no. If, if there are things on it from twenty twenty that you think people should get credit for.
Okay.
Um, if you send them to me, I'll just coordinate them, just say, what about this, 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 if you have thoughts or ideas? Because we didn't leave things up intentionally. It's just, when you look, it's pretty overwhelming. There's a lot, a lot that got done. Especially in a pandemic year, so. Um, if you would look at those, at least, it's a lot of pages, print them off and at least look at the twenty twenties. See the work that your staff has done. And then the thought exchange for twenty twenty-one will come in December, go start. Okay, it's different because we used to do our strategic plan all in a day kinda and then have an event and this year we can't. I can't get stuff that. This has gone a little bit long tonight, sorry about that.
Right.
Um, foundation report is, is out there, Brian, as people, wasn't a lot. Um, state convention is now all virtual. Instead of going someplace for it. Superintendent Evaluation Sally hasn't tonight, so he'll, she'll pass those out to you guys as board members.
Yeah, so with regard to that, it, uh, and again, it says back before the December meeting, I would like to have them back, you know, prior to Thanksgiving, if it's possible, allow me some time to summarize things and get things together for discussion, so. And if you, if you can't get it to me, if you drop it off, I don't care if you drop it off at the office at the high school or to get it back to Sally and they'll call me, let me know, so.
Number four, Rich, if you wanna hit that.
Yeah, and congratulations to Renee Sayer and Guadalupe Moreno for making it to the board. You know, again, hard, hard fart fought uh election. I know there weren't any uh, any uh spotlights where you had to go to city council and everybody got interviewed and stuff. That happened to me the first time I ran, so. You know, but again, there was a lot of people running, so again, I appreciate you guys taking the time to, to do that and we'll uh anxiously await your, uh, your thoughts and ideas that you can share with us. Uh, and again, you know, Minor, you still got another couple of meetings to go and Virginia as well. And uh, again, we appreciate your time that you've been on the board and, and uh, hope that maybe you consider another run here in a couple of years when some others might be coming off the board. You just never know, so. But uh, again, we do wish you well and uh anxiously awaiting the, the uh, January meeting where you'd be inducted, so.
Sally did send in information on new board member workshops and at the time that she sent it, it looked like you could go to a meeting. But um
Yeah.
I, I think that the state convention's all virtual. I can't imagine that that's not gonna be virtual for you. Okay, so it probably will not be in person. I, I shouldn't say that because they haven't said it yet, but.
In today.
Good.
And so I will register them after you. And then you probably will receive something by email directly from them. If not, I will forward what I receive back.
So then after the December meeting, then we'll work to get you to put in as new board members with passwords and things, so Sally does that. So she'll work with you from that point on, on how you get, you have to have a school email or you can use your own if you want, but you can have a school email as a board member, so. Yeah, Mr. Brody will work with Sally on how you wanna do this. You wanna board member email and then your own email or if you just wanna use your own, but some people have to do that. That's their business.
Any other correspondence? None? I will entertain a motion for adjournment in the meeting.
I will adjourn the meeting.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. Thank you.
Rich?